So we can uh and call the meeting to order at ten oh two.
Very good, guys. Welcome to our special meeting here for October. So let me ask you from a agenda point of view, looking at the various things that are in here, would it be okay for the board here if we realign the agenda items and have the reports on number four presented before we talk about Bill's letter? I just think those two presentations frankly inform the board, inform us much more about what is currently happening in the practice in the city. And then I think, you know, having Bill's letter be part of that. So Bill, if you don't mind, if we kind of rearrange here a little bit, I just think it gives us a little more information. Otherwise, it's kind of asked backwards here to, you know, respond to you or give some thoughts and then, you know, the other two presentations to get to tell us what's really going on. So, all right. So, Arian, do I need to have a motion or anything to change the agenda? Is that all friendly?
Yeah, no, I'm fine with it. And I don't think we have an issue. It looks like everybody that's prepared to present is here anyway.
Excellent. Henry, nice of you to join us, pal. And so before we go to, we're flipping four and two. So it's all keep open forum is number three. So with that, is it Jess, are you leading us off with the downtown transportation plan?
Yeah, I'm gonna give a quick intro and then turn it over to our team leads, Wilson and Eric, who are here. So just a quick thanks to the parking board and members of the public bill and others for holding this special meeting since we didn't have time for these items in September. Appreciate the extra attention. These next two items are two things that are not directly about our downtown current parking supply, but they're very material. And so we wanted to make sure that the downtown parking board had a chance to give us input about, you know, both the downtown transportation plan, which will be the first item, and then also the citywide potential changes to off-street parking and transportation demand management requirements. So these are both, you know, big picture and long-term plans. None of the things that are presented here are going to, you know, materialize immediately, especially in terms of kind of the downtown transportation plan thinking. These are long-term horizons. But again, they're part of the big picture as Charlie was suggesting too. So with that, I will turn it over to Eric and Wilson from the downtown transportation plan team and to introduce the item.
All right. Thank you, Jess, and thank you to everyone for making some time for us. So I'm gonna share my screen here. So I'm gonna start off and then pass it over to Wilson, and then he will pass it back to me to discuss our, what we're calling big moves. All right, one more second here.
So Eric, while you have the map up there, I just want to continue to thank the city of San Jose for including San Jose State in the downtown maps. So just literally two, three years ago, that was never the case. And so I truly appreciate every time seeing these maps that include us.
Great. And yeah, we've had a number of recent meetings with San Jose State and Charlie's team on the master plan, and we're just seeing some incredible opportunities for synergy there. Okay, so this is a brief overview of the presentation. So we're gonna talk about, you know, where we are in the process. We're gonna talk about some of the key messages we've heard from the community and important stakeholders on what they'd like to see us focus on. And then Wilson's really gonna do the heavy listing on explaining proposed changes to the street network, preliminary proposed changes. And then, as I said, I'm gonna spend a little time on talking about some of the big moves that we are contemplating as part of the plan. They are, they're not things we are implementing in the plan, but we're sort of planting seeds and seeing what kind of kind of reactions we get. So just to, you know, some framing comments, you all know how, how much development is going on in the downtown core. A lot of private investment in buildings like this, which is, this is now built actually across from City Hall, as well as significant investments in public transportation, BART, Deeradon Station and others. So really, with the downtown plan, we wanna, we wanna leverage all that and really create the downtown we want by focusing on what is our charge, which is transportation. Here are the plan of boundaries. So off on the west, we've got, here's Deeradon Station, includes the Alameda going up to Japan Town here on the north, 11th Street and Taylor here in the northeast, and it's sort of both a little diagonally here to 12th Street and Keys along Cuyahoga here. So that gives you a sense of the planned boundaries here. In terms of engagement today, we had, we've had a number of listening sessions. We had a public workshop in October of last year. We have hired these three community organizations you see on the right to help us really shape our outreach. So they've been a big part of our process. And then to inspire us, help us aim higher, we've also held some speaker series events where we've brought in notable experts to help us think about, you know, what could we do? For example, with the space under eighty-seven, how could we make that more inviting? As well as specific needs of specific communities or sub-communities. So whether it's, you know, different ethnic and racial groups, or we had a session focusing on women's needs in transportation downtown. So some big comments overall, we've heard a lot of desire for, you know, more safe, efficient and comfortable travel for people of all ages and abilities, you know, connecting people to where they want to go. So in terms of transit, we've heard a lot about in the need for, people saying, if you want me to ride transit, it's gonna need to be more competitive, more travel time competitive, a lot of comments about light rail there in particular. In terms of Santa Clara Street, we heard a lot of people, many people say, you know, Santa Clara Street isn't really the iconic sort of gateway to the city that, you know, we, many people feel we deserve as, you know, the biggest city in the Bay Area and the capital of Silicon Valley. A lot of people also talking about the freeway, and this is more from the bicycle and pedestrian and perhaps scooter perspective, but the freeways eighty-seven and two eighty, they really chop up the downtown. And how can we make that a more pleasant experience for people to cross? More physical separation from cars for bikes and pedestrians. And then just generally, we want more of downtown to be a place where people actually want to spend time. Our guiding principles for the plan, of course, I think I sort of alluded to this at the beginning, but we view this plan as, as transportation to support the downtown we want and not the other way around. So our transportation system should, should help create the place we want. Of course, the city has ambitious climate goals, so that's all baked into this and the modes we want to encourage. Of course, we need to foster through transportation, you know, a vibrant economy. So it needs to get people to where they're going. And fundamental to all this is equity. It needs to be, we need to be creating a downtown that is for everyone. I won't dwell on these too much. These are basically our data analysis, which Wilson will talk about in greater detail, sort of reflects a lot of what I just summarized in terms of the community feedback. So I think we all know most of our street network is prioritized as driving. There are not enough high-quality bike facilities. Transit vehicles get delayed. And I think really key, and Wilson will dive into this more, but currently, we have a lot of people coming into downtown from places elsewhere, and that represents a huge share of trips. In the future, with all this development we're seeing, we are really trying to grow the share of internal trips to downtown, trips that are shorter and that can more reasonably be taken by modes other than the car. So in terms of growth, we expect a twofold growth in residences by, and this is, I'm sorry, the time horizon for the plan is twenty forty and a two and a half time increase in terms of workers. And then, of course, with all these new people, we expect many more trips, so about double the amount of travel demand. And really, so you all know, we are planning and investing in very robust mass transit, BART, electrified Caltrain. But the purpose of this plan is to take those as a given and what more, what actions can we take beyond those to get us to our mode shift goal and quality of life goal? I see a question from Tessa. Should I, should I go through the presentation or should we take any questions as we go?
Tessa, is your question about the presentation here or is it something different?
Oh, can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, okay, good. Well, I guess I was just commenting on the lack of bicycle infrastructure in downtown. And what I've noticed just recently is that you've given our bicycle paths to the restaurants and, and, you know, with blockades protecting the diners, and we have to share the road with the cars. So that's one issue of what's happening in downtown. And, you know, you know, and San Fernando essentially is no longer a bike path, you know, and either is Santa Clara. And so that really needs to change, and both those streets should be bike paths, and neither of them are.
So Tessa, excuse me. So let's public comment and what have you, we're gonna do after these presentations. So let's table that for right now. If there's questions about the specific presentation that's being given, let's entertain that. But otherwise, let's keep going.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right. No, and thank you, Tessa. And we will be, I think Wilson in particular will talk about the, really, we're trying to think about every block in the downtown and make sure it serves the, you know, more clearly articulated desires and needs for each. So I think that sort of will get to your question. Okay, so with that, I will turn it over to Wilson.
Thank you, Eric, and good morning, everyone. My name is Wilson from DOT. And first, I would like to apologize for, you know, you know, because like the presentation that we just gave is based on the short allotment that we were originally given in the last month meeting. And since we have more time today, some of the data points, some of the bullet points that Eric just talked about, we can actually share some data behind, behind these points to give you a bigger, like a clearer picture about what we're actually trying to say here. And so if, if you don't mind, Eric, would we want to kind of allow me to share my screen, because I'm going to share with you. Because like, since, since August, we have done a couple of presentations to the SAP Sharks Downtown Association as well as San Jose State University. And in those presentations, we have shared a lot of data analysis behind the summaries that Eric just fabulously put together. And so if you don't mind, I can spend the next chunk of time kind of sharing the data behind our summary to give you a better sense. And I am going to share my screen. And, and I'm sure Charlie has a copy of this. This is the presentation we gave to the, to the San Jose State University. Sorry. You guys, can you hear, can you see my screen? Okay, great, great, because I cannot tell. So you should see like a histogram on the right side of the screen. Is that right? The histogram?
Yes, that's correct. Wilson, if you, if you go to present mode, we'll see it a little bit bigger.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jess.
Thanks, Wilson.
Yes. So, you know, some, some of these slides are already talked about by Eric, and they just give you more data points about what we mean by that. So, you know, so this is the growth we expect to see in the downtown area in the next twenty years, right? Two times the number of residents, two point five times the number of workers, and one point five times the number of students. And so I'm going to share with you our initial considerations for our street networks in downtown. And Eric is going to end the presentation with our consideration for what we call the big move ideas. So we talked about this already. So, um, you know, we have gone through a multi-month process of gathering, you know, all the data about transportation, how people get around, you know, places with the transportation options provided to them pre-pandemic. So the data that we are sharing today are related to the travel behavior prior to the pandemic in twenty nineteen. And this slide talks about, you know, interestingly, you know, eighty percent of the people get to and around downtown via a vehicle, whether they drive alone or ride in a vehicle with someone else. And the percentages are shown in, you know, the yellow color of the histogram. And we also break it down into, you know, whether the trips are internal, meaning that they are, they originated and designed in downtown, or trips that are actually trying to leave downtown or entering downtown from elsewhere. And a key takeaway from this is that, you know, for trips that are internal in downtown, meaning that these trips have an origin and a destination in downtown, roughly forty percent of those trips are made in a vehicle. And this gives us some, some things to think about, like as we are going to create a better transportation system in downtown, how can we, how can we provide more options to people so that people don't necessarily need to, you know, ride in a vehicle or drive with just like one or two blocks away? And obviously, there are a lot, a lot of considerations that people make in their decision-making. Most likely is safety. We have heard from the survey that a lot of people consider to drive today even for a short block distance because they don't feel safe biking, walking, or taking transit around downtown. So, sorry, let me. Yeah, so two thirds of the downtown trip today come from elsewhere, and we did a breakdown into, you know, what are the trip purposes for the trips in twenty nineteen? And you know, one, one thing to take away from this is that, you know, unlike other areas of the city where there is a specific peak hours or peak travel time, in downtown, you know, the travel needs are basically, you know, kind of universally or easily distributed throughout the hours of the day, especially during the midday period when there's a lot of trips related to restaurants and amenities and recreational activities that require a lot of travel needs. And by the way, the data are obtained from various sources, and we have gone through a multi-month process of calibrating the data collector from various sources. You may have heard about Big Data. You know, we have worked with a big data vendor called Replica to gather this information. And we are happy to share more about, about that data collection and analysis process. So this is a slide about, you know, collision data, you know, and this aligns with our vision zero corridors in terms of Santa Clara Street and North First Street and tenth and eleventh streets being the, the streets with the highest rate of collisions. And so as we are planning for a downtown system, you know, how can we ensure that, you know, safety is of primary consideration as we design these streets? So this is a slide about travel time difference between driving versus riding in the bus. And the numbers are shown in minutes. So let's, if you can see my mouse, I'll take the downtown core as an example here. So you can see my mouse navigating around, you know, two bar charts. You know, the yellow bar represents the amount of minutes that a resident or, or anyone who start or end in the downtown core would need, you know, the time it takes for them to enter or leave the downtown core in a vehicle versus in a bus or light rail vehicle. So you're talking about a comparison of fifty minutes for trips that designs or originates from the downtown core in a vehicle versus taking as many as seventy-nine minutes for, for anyone who tries to, who tried to enter or leave the downtown core in a bus or a light rail vehicle. And, and that comparison is distributed okay, among, among the downtown area. So we expect the downtown growth to double from fifty thousand trips during the peak hour to as many as a hundred thousand trips in the peak hour. And so if we do a breakdown in terms of mode share, you know, we realize that, you know, if we just deliver the BART stations, the electrified Caltrain, high-speed rail, the VTA enhanced services and the bike plan, and without we thinking about the downtown streets and how we provide a more balanced or more sustainable street network in downtown, we will be looking at, you know, only slight reduction in mode shift. For example, today, we are looking at seventy-five percent of the trips being made in a vehicle, whether this is driver loan or ride-sharing. In twenty forty, with the delivery of these transit infrastructure, we will still see a lot of vehicles getting in and out of downtown. And so we know that we don't have a transportation system that can accommodate two times the amount of vehicles in the downtown area. So the only solution that we can think about accommodating the growth and also supporting the existing travel needs is to create a more balanced system so that roughly fifty percent of the trips are made in vehicles, and they can be split into driver loan being a half of that, and an under half will be taken by the TNCs, Uber, Lyft, taxi, and carpooling. And then we would like the, the remaining half of the mode share to be done or conducted via other means such as walking, biking, and transit. And those are the trips that are most likely shorter trips, trips that can, that can be accommodated by transit stations.
I'm sorry, Wilson. Where are those, maybe I missed this and I apologize, where are those trips originating from? You know, are you seeing the, the length of the commute that's coming into the downtown from various spots?
Yeah, so, so, so if you can, if I can go back to the trip purpose slide here. So these are the, the purpose of the trips that enter or leave downtown today, and they take, they, you know, the trip distance vary based on the trip purposes. So you can imagine that during the peak hour, when a lot of the trips are related to commute or school trips, like those are the trips that may take a longer distance, whereas like trips that happen during the other hours of the day, such as the midday or in the evening times or in the early morning times, you know, those are the trip purpose really related to, you know, amenities, you know, getting to, you know, the laundry store or, or, or visiting a park, et cetera. Those are the trips that are more like relatively shorter distance.
But also, let me give you the example. If someone lived in Morgan Hill or, you know, the South Bay area, and they commuted into the downtown for whatever reason, right? You have your car option, you have a train option, you have a bus option, all right, to get up here from that area. The car will take you depending, right, a half hour or whatever it is. The bus could take you four times that amount of time, right? The train, if you don't catch the six AM train, then you're on the local. Again, it'll take you four times the amount of the car. And so it goes back to an earlier slide that you have of reliability, consistency, the amount of, you know, just how often these services are being offered. And when you have erratic schedules, you're forcing people to get in a car.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's exactly the kind of findings that, that we're also coming to Charlie, right? Which is perhaps not rocket science, right? But something that, you know, we see not only in people's lived experiences, but also showing up in the data. And just to clarify that data from twenty nineteen, Wilson was just showing, you don't, you don't need to go back to it. You know, that was again, this replica, which is a source of aggregated actual trips, big data-based. And then when we add in our land use changes for twenty forty, we look at, use, use our, our transportation travel demand model to say, okay, with these new uses throughout the Bay Area, how are people going to travel differently, given the new land uses and the new transportation options? So that's, that's the basis. We're not constraining it to any specific to and from.
Yeah, I think the big challenge really here is with all the investment, you know, what we want to do, we need to get people out of their car and pour into public transportation. And I see that's, that is a total different subject, but it also difficult because people use their convenience. Like Charlie was saying, you know, if it takes me four times as long to take public transportation, I will take the car, no matter if an infrastructure, infrastructure for public transportation is there or not. But again, you know, that is a different topic, but that really needs to be looked much closer into.
I'll just add that. I think it's something worth adding to a little bit of the work that's going on in the city. I'm Ramzes, by the way, Division Manager of Planning Policy and Sustainability in DOT. And, you know, we're looking across the city about how to do exactly what you guys are talking about because we totally see that transit is slow, is not, you know, kind of being competitive. And just like anybody else, you're gonna take the thing that's most efficient for your life. And so how do we do that? So we are looking across the city at a transit-first policy that council directs us to work on that will look directly at how do we improve our right-of-way design, our signal priority systems and all of that, specifically to expedite transit. We're looking at bus lanes going down Santa Clara and other places like Monterey. To speak to Charlie, you're, you're concerned of kind of going north-south and all that kind of stuff. So we're just looking at all of these different ways to improve transit. Because while transit is run by VTA, transit runs on our streets. So we create the environment for their success. And so we're, we're trying to look at how do we, as the city, take on that responsibility in a very clear and direct way. And we'll be bringing that policy along with our citywide transportation plan called the Access and Mobility Plan up to council early next year. So something else to watch for those interested in that.
Thank you, Ramzes. And, and to, to, to add to Wolf's, Wolf's point, this, this is not a different topic. You know, ways to make, you know, all the transportation options more available and more convenient for the residents and workers in downtown have been the primary subjects of this downtown plan. And so what we are trying to share in the next few slides is some initial considerations that are derived out of the analysis that we just shared. And to your exact point, you know, how can we make the multimodal system more stand out? And so this slide is really about what is the proposed vehicle network? Because a good transportation system includes clear ways for different modes to travel around downtown. And so that includes vehicles. So, so, you know, not, not trying to dive too much into the details here since we may be out of time now, but something to note that, you know, we are thinking about, there are some connectors in a downtown area that are more for serving as primary gateways for vehicles entering and leaving downtown. Um, serving as, um, primary gateways for vehicles, uh, entering and leaving downtown. And, um, those streets that are not connectors, um, should also be available for or open to vehicles. As circulation purposes, um, so that they can travel on the connectors entering downtown. And then they will make a turn somewhere, uh, in the downtown area to try to navigate, um, into their destination. And, um, and so the difference between the connectors and, um, shown in a thicker colored line. Uh, versus, um, ex circulation street, uh, shown in a relatively thinner lines there. Um, you also see, um, lines in more of, uh, tortoises, uh, uh, or, or cyan colors. Um, and those are the streets, um, that, uh, we've been thinking about, uh, potentially, uh, being closed, um, to vehicles. Um, and a lot of these close streets already happened today, uh, for example, St. Pedro's Square. Um, and, and, uh, some of the streets, uh, in, in, in the downtown area, um. Um, it's also worth noting that there's a dotted lines over here on First Street and Marcus Street. And those are the streets that we are thinking about perhaps being closed for interim festival purposes. Um, so they, they still be open during most time of the day. But during event, uh, during any like festivals on the weekends, like those are the streets that could be prime for that activities. And so we, we can potentially consider to close, uh, those vehicles, those streets to vehicles. And, um, then preserve the space for, for activities, um. Um, for example, this section of First Street is, um, has been, uh, was closed, uh, to Ibakaia last month. Um, and we also see a lot of activities on, on that street, uh, for that purpose. Um, another slide is about transit network. Um, looking at the V T A frequent, uh, bus network, um, we think that, you know, in order to, um, make, uh. Transit more time competitive, we need to think about how to design, uh, streets. To support the operations of these, uh, transit vehicles to make, uh, them, um, travel faster and, um. And, and so like these are the, the, the transit, what we call the Grand Boulevard or Transit Priority Streets, uh, that look at, um. Um, you know, improvements such as, for example, you may have heard about the dedicated bus lanes being considered on Santa Clara Street. You know, can something like that be done or considered on the other streets as well to support the transit network overall? Um, this is the proposed pedestrian network and I'm sorry for, for going very fast now, um, but, uh, we are happy to talk about that in more detail during the Q and A. Um, so this is the proposed, uh, pedestrians, sorry.
Good. Yes, sir, if you could mute your computer, please. Thank you. Or whoever the host is here, they can mute everybody. Thanks.
So, so, you know, taking, um, you know, taking a look at the land use in downtown, like where the restaurants are at. Um, where are the key destinations in downtown? We, uh, initialized, uh, this, uh, pedestrian network to call out some streets that we think. Uh, should provide a lot of place making and wayfinding, um, amenities, uh, to, to support and encourage people walking into. In, into and around downtown. So the red streets are, um, as you saw from the last slide, the transit corridors. So those are the streets that we would really want to improve pedestrian access to those stations. We also see, um, you know, blue lines, um, and, uh, in, in thicker colors or thicker lines. Uh, that represent, uh, streets that, uh, would be, uh, primed for, uh, uh, pedestrian activities. And it will be great to provide a lot of like streetscapes, place making, um, elements such as like parklets, a lot of wayfinding. Um, to support the activation of those streets. Um, again, the, the streets in cyan colors, um, are, are, um, streets that, uh, are, would be. Could be closed through vehicles, uh, and that includes trails. So you see that there's a trail network, uh, near the Deirdre Down area. Um, you also see that, um, as part of the Deirdre Down Station Area Plan, uh, the idea for having a, um. You know, a, 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 a trail, uh, network underneath the elevated, um, uh, train tracks. Um, is also an idea, uh, to consider. Last but not least, this is the proposed bike network, um, you know. To a comment we heard earlier about, uh, there's a, there may be a lack of very high quality bike network. Uh, or bike facility because, uh, people feel that, you know, uh, even if you're on a bike, you're still next to, uh. Uh, you know, uh, influx of vehicles next to it and you don't feel safe biking around. And so the idea about the proposed. Bike network here is to identify, uh, which are the ideal routes. Um, for, um, bicyclists. So, uh, let's take, um, you know. Uh, an example of, you know, if you are trying to exit, uh, the Deirdre Down Station out of the trains and you would like to. Uh, go to the San Jose State University. Um, and if you happen to, uh, be in downtown for the first time, you don't know where to, where to bike and which route you would take on a bike. You know, you know, this map shows that, you know, you would take San Fernando Streets as the key way to, uh. Uh, to connect you between Deirdre Down Station and the university, um, because, um. You won't see that iconic or that high-quality bike infrastructure, um, on other parallel streets. So the idea here is to call out which streets would be ideal for that kind of bike activities and designs the streets to support, uh, that. Um, and so, you know, if San Fernando Street is going to be a bike priority streets. Um, with a very high quality, um, of bike, uh, facility, then you won't expect to see a lot of traffic. You won't expect to see a lot of, um, parking activities, um, or vehicles trying to, uh, cut through onto San Fernando. And so like, how can we design streets in such a way that can support that kind of bike environment? Um, and so, you know, again, the idea about, uh, presenting, uh, the street networks by different modes in the last few slides. Is to present the idea about how we can prioritize the purpose for each of the streets in downtown. So each street should look different. This should not look exactly the same, such as what we do see today. Um, so that, you know, whether you are on a vehicle, on a bike, whether you're walking or on a transit network. Uh, or a, a transit vehicle, you know, uh, you know, what would be the ideal route for you. Uh, to travel around safely and conveniently, um. And so, so this is what we call the Street topology, which is a policy framework, um. Developed out of the general plan to provide that characterization of the streets by mode. And we are considering to propose something like that in a downtown plan. Um, and we would like to, uh, share some of these, uh, slides or these maps in our upcoming online open house. Um, we expect to launch this open house in the next few weeks and we would invite, uh, all of you, um, and. Um, your affiliations and friends and families to take advantage of this online open house opportunity to provide your feedback as it relates to. Um, the motor networks that we just presented, um, as well as, um, the characterization that we are trying to initiate, uh. Um, in, 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 in the name of the Street topology, uh, framework. With that, um, I would like to turn it back to Eric. Um, for sharing a few more slides about the big moves. I think, uh, um, you may have seen some of that before. Um, and then we can open up for Q and A.
Great, thanks, Phil Wilson. Um, just one second here. I never do this right here. Okay, all right. Um, and sorry, um, Arian, uh, what, what, how much more time? I'll tailor it to that.
Uh, the meeting goes until, there's only the two items. Uh, so four A M. Four B downtown transportation plan and the citywide parking and transportation man management. So we've got until noon.
I'll take a, okay, I'll take a few minutes on this, uh, won't belabor, but, um.
Sorry, I'd like to interrupt. I think it is actually three items if you count my discussion, please.
Yeah, I, I.
We will give it out time for the public comment.
Completely agree. Bill, oh, well, Bill's part of the agenda. We moved him from number two to number four. So, and there's number three for public agenda, you know, public comment, so.
Right. Okay, so as I mentioned at the beginning, uh, of the presentation, uh, we, we are proposing. And proposing sort of lightly, we are planting seeds for some possible big moves. These are things that, um, we feel should be considered. To respond to some of the bigger community concerns that, that we've heard. So things that we think, you know, it's not gonna be just a matter of restripping a lane or, or moving a curb, right? It's, we should be thinking about potential big custom. And we also don't take that lightly. Okay, so the, the, we, we recognize that first up, we are already. Uh, doing a bunch of big moves, whether it's, um, you know, approving Google's Downtown West development. Uh, the, the V T A's bar project, as well as, uh, the Deirdre Down, uh, station project that, that I work on. Uh, these are big moves and we want to make sure before we propose or think about yet another big move, that, that we're really making the most of these. And getting the most, uh, mileage out of them possible. Um, that said, yeah, there are some big, uh, issues that we've heard, heard about from the community that we think. Require a closer look and also some, some big thinking potentially. So I mentioned at the beginning, we heard a lot of people saying, yeah, Santa Clara Street. You know, we all know it's our, our main boulevard, um, but it's, it's a little bit, uh, unsatisfying in, in some regards. Whether it's in terms of, uh, the, the pedestrian activity, the vibrancy of commercial, commercial storefronts. Uh, in some ways, it's, it's, you know, it's an attractive street like this, this picture shows, but, um, it also shows, you know, not many people on the street. So, um, in thinking about that, um, you know. W- we've thought a little bit about the, 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 the Santa, the Santa Clara Street of the nineteen thirties, right? Which was in some ways perhaps what, what we think we'd like Santa Clara to be, uh, more of today. So it's, you know, certainly a transportation corridor, it needs to be that, it is that. But it's also, uh, the city's main address, the, you know, where we have lots of, uh, social and economic interaction. People going to businesses, uh, living life. So, um, here are some ideas on how that could be. Uh, achieved, you know, is it better, uh, sidewalks, better street furnishings, uh. Uh, street trees perhaps, uh, you know, is, 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 is on, is curbside parking? Is that the, the highest and best use of that, of that precious land? Um, as well as, uh, perhaps some traffic calming, uh, features. Um, there's also been, and this has been discussed a fair bit as part of, um, Google's Downtown West Development. You know, we're thinking, how are we gonna accommodate all of these new workers and people? And so we think, you know, doubling down on high-capacity transit is, is, is a key thing. And in particular, there's, there's an interest in making, um, bus transit work better. So, uh, that's something we are, we are thinking about and, and going to call for in the plan is, uh. A, a public service lane study as we're, as we're calling it, so. But lanes that are dedicated for, uh, not just buses, but also emergency vehicles. Um, a second big move relates to, to bike infrastructure. So, um, I think many people would say, um, myself included. That, uh, San Jose has, uh, in many ways, the best trail network in the Bay Area. You know, you ride, uh, segments like this up in the northern part of the city on the, uh, on the Guadalupe River Trail. And, you know, in some ways, it's like what they have in, in Northern Europe with these, these bike highways. Um, and then V T A is doing some great work on, on their central bikeway. Uh, project, which is an east-west connection, um, sort of from the, 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 um, Guadalupe River Park. We're off to the Berryas Bar Station. Um, so these are all great things that we can, can leverage. Uh, thinking about downtown in particular, so how can we make the most of these in the downtown core? Well, the thing is, y- you ride on this trail, for example, and, and I do ride on it a fair bit, you know, you, you head south. Um, you, you get to Julian Street and it, it, it gets pretty choppy. You don't know where the trail goes. You, you know, you have to cross Julian, lots of traffic. Um, so as this area, uh, intensifies and many, many more people taking trips, there's gonna be a lot more, uh, conflicts, right? The potential for more conflicts between bikes, cars, everybody on the road. So we think there's, uh, perhaps an idea for, uh, something like this, like they have in Copenhagen. So some, uh, elevating, uh, the bikeway above the street. Uh, ideally in a, in a pretty aesthetically attractive way. Um, to, to, to facilitate those connections. Um, and this, this, this one in, in Copenhagen, I think it is, is a good example, right? Because it, it's, um, it goes through this area that has all these keys. So people are going through the city on, on bike, um, they happen to be going through this area. Some, some are going to destinations right here, but many are just, uh, biking through, so, um. So this is a, an elegant solution that I think, um, you know, has some relevance for us. And in fact, in the updated Deirdre Down Station Area Plan, uh, we call for this kind of connection, uh, over Santa Clara Street. Though it is not really developed in any degree of detail. And again, as I said at the beginning, we are planting seeds for these things. These are big projects that would require their own separate studies. If we were to pursue them. Um, a third relates to, to light rail transit. Again, as I mentioned in our community engagement, we, we heard a lot of complaints. About the slow speed of, of light rail through the downtown core, you know. Very quick for getting from some parts of San Jose to others, but as you get to the downtown, the, the trains sort of meander and. You know, they, they, they share space with cars and so how could you speed up light rail? Um, and here are a few options we looked at or we are looking at. Again, looking at it, it's sort of loosely stated here, you know, we haven't, uh, investigate, studied these in great detail. But, um, ranging from perhaps the least capital intensive, the least disruptive. So there might be a, a possibility to consolidate light rail service on, on First Street. So getting rid of the first and second street couplet, this would make it, um, a little more, a little easier to understand. We heard from people, you know, this, it, we don't know where to wait for the train, you know, people are less familiar. They don't know that the northbound is on First Street, the southbound on Second, um, and then, and then, um. So, and we, we could maybe turn, if we did that, we could turn Second Street over to, you know, something pretty, pretty incredible, you know, with more. Street front eateries perhaps or something like that. And if we were to go really full bore though, and if we were really to focus on speeding up light rail. Cause, cause that, the, the, the first street consolidation probably wouldn't speed up light rail that much. But it would likely make it, you know, a little more intuitive. Um, but if we were really just focused on speeding up light rail, we could just bore a tunnel from Deirdre Down Station. Uh, through the Saint James Park, basically. Again, um, that's a simple solution in some ways, but obviously extremely costly. Uh, would be disruptive and, uh, I guess the question is, is that the, the highest priority for the amount of investment it would require? The final big move is about, uh, bridging freeway barriers. And again, this is a bridging freeway barriers, not so much from the, from the perspective of the, the car driver, but more from the perspective of the pedestrian. The cyclist, the, the scooter user. Um, you're all familiar with the example from San Francisco. Where, uh, the Loma Prieta earthquake, um, took down the Embarcadero Freeway. Um, I think most people view it as a, a good idea, a good decision not to have rebuilt this elevated freeway. This area around, uh, the ferry building is much more vibrant than it was back then. Um, we're also not just thinking about, uh, the, the obvious analog for us here is the eighty-seven, right? And perhaps you've seen, um, the, the conceptual drawings that Spur put together in their regional strategy. But this just shows what, what kinds of connections you might be able to achieve, um, what kinds of street conditions. If you, if you, uh, took down eighty-seven, again, I'm, I'm not saying this is, we recognize a big, big move. Um, turning it in, in this case into an urban boulevard, but you know, some people have suggested maybe there's a, a short tunnel. Whatever the case, we have also talked with, uh, San Jose State in particular about, um, I two eighty. In that case, I two eighty, as you know, is in a depressed configuration. If any of you have been to Seattle, you might have seen a freeway park there where they've, you know, decked over strategically through a, a, a part, part of the freeway. Creating this great urban park. Um, and I know, um, I'm including this slide here because we've talked with, as I've mentioned, the. San Jose State Master Plan Team and very, uh, the university is very interested in, in, in improving connections between South Campus and North Campus. So, um, in terms of I two eighty, you know, the, the ideas that we're, we're, we're throwing around include, you know. Consolidating ramps, for example, for example, so there, there are many ramps, as, as you know, on, on Seventh Street and others. Uh, maybe putting in a more, um, substantial full interchange, uh, to Almeden and Vine and doing away with those smaller ones. Uh, that would allow for these better, um, connections, um, between the parts of the. Uh, that would allow for these better um connections um between the parts of the campus. Um, I think that is all that I have in terms of the big move. So again, we're not implementing those, we're planting seeds. If there's a lot of community support for some of them, we will talk about how they get studied further. Um, and as Wilson mentioned, we are launching our online open house uh later this month. Um, you will be able to find it um via the, this is the Move San Jose website. And we are one of uh several plans, as you can see. Uh, uh Wilson and Ramzes are also very involved in the Access and Mobility Plan, which is the first. We also have an emerging emerging mobility plan. So all information on all those plans can be found on this website. And you can also sign up for email updates on our plan um by clicking on, there's a there's a survey tab here. Um, so with that, yeah, I'll turn it back to um maybe Charlie or whoever would like to moderate for questions.
Thank you, Eric and and Justin Wilson. Uh, appreciate your guys' presentations and uh the thoughtfulness and uh, you know, going through that with us. So, well done. Uh, does anybody have any questions for this team on these specific presentations? David?
Thank you, Charlie. Um, this is a little bit off the subject, but I've always been curious if there is a time series data set of maybe like uh how many cars have been registered in San Jose from DMV for the last, say, twenty years? I found uh one set of data from twenty eighteen that actually showed what mode they were, like whether they were electric cars or hybrid or uh whatever. I would love to see that data set. I've tried lots of different places to find it and I can't find it. And it would really help inform me when I think about transportation in Santa Clara County. Um, I don't know, raise your hand if you have it, but I don't think, I can't find it anywhere. I can't find it Department of Finance or anywhere else. DMV must know how many cars they register in Santa Clara County every every year, I would think. Uh, the second thing is um is regards Santa Clara Street. I actually have a business on the ground floor of Santa Clara Street. Um, I I'll just say it straight out, if you take the parking away from the front of my business, I go out of business. And I'll refer back to your picture of nineteen thirty Santa Clara Street and uh the fact that congestion is good. Congestion is not bad for retail businesses. And I would urge you or ask you or whatever to think a lot about how you're factoring in the retail spaces on the ground floor in in downtown with your your uh efforts to move people essentially through downtown. Or I guess from out outside downtown to someplace in downtown, I'm not quite sure which. Because um the parking, I spent um uh decades in the retail development business before I opened my little family business. And the parking in front of a business is critical to the success of that business. And one way to inform yourselves might be to look at the stretch of Santa Clara Street between First and Second, where there is no parking in that that block. And that retail doesn't work because there's no parking. You don't have to have a lot, you just have to have a little. Californians will drive around the block seven times in order to try to get that space. And that's what uh activates the street fronts. Otherwise, I think, as you uh make these transit corridors and other, all these other things, you're gonna destroy the streetscape. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Uh, Tamika, Tamika?
I think one of the things that we also need to take into consideration, and I don't know how to to judge the metrics on this, is how things start going with the Laura's Law implementation and public safety for females. Um, I'm glad that some of the the studies are involving that because unless you create a safe environment, people will take their cars and they'll look for the most convenient parking spot. And so even if you make the most um efficient bikeway, roadway, streetscape, unless it's safe, you're still gonna have people in their cars. And I think, you know, all these uh studies need to take into consideration and work in tandem with what the county is planning to do with the homeless situation, with the mental illness, um and the the really disturbed individuals that you see posted up twenty-four seven on Santa Clara Street.
Thank you, Tamika. Any other comments on the presentations? Jessica, thank you, and uh, you know, Eric Wilson, appreciate you guys uh coming in today. So thanks for that. Uh, let's go to uh number three on our agenda, our open forum. Uh, is there anybody here for open forum?
Charlie?
Yeah?
Did you want us to do the Parking and Transportation Demand Management Ordinance item next?
I absolutely did, sorry. I I'm sorry, my brain saw two different presentations and I know you didn't get to the second one, so my bad, absolutely.
Great, great. And then, you know, we um we can be flexible if this jogs any thoughts on the downtown transportation plan as well. Uh, you know, we we don't have to be terribly rigid about um about topics today, right? Because we're here for your feedback overall. Um, so this is a summary of uh the Parking and Transportation Demand Management Ordinance work that the city is doing. Um, this work is a project being led by the Planning Department with DOT, um both departments, because it is largely about the requirements of new development that the city puts on uh to those projects as they come in. So this is uh not directly about public parking, although we all, you know, know and appreciate that, you know, what the private sector has to do is required to build or to do as part of its uh development certainly has implications back and forth with the public parking um as well. Uh, again, this is a citywide effort, uh not just looking at the downtown, but certainly I wanted the Downtown Parking Board to be well aware. And this effort is also supported, as we'll say, whoop, sorry, that went fast, um by the American Cities Climate Challenge, which San Jose is a participant in. All right, let's try to go more slowly with my fingers. Oh, failing terribly. Let me see, there. All right, so again, this is a summary of uh work that we're doing. There was a very uh three-hour city council study session on these changes on August twenty-seven, uh which includes this information, but also um a set of members of the public who were invited to share their perspectives, development, uh community members, environmentalists and and uh others. Uh, so we're just going to give you the introduction context to this, what the proposed ordinance changes will be, and some of the programmatic details, especially about the transportation demand management. All right. So the the work that we're doing is proposed to be twofold. One is about what we require of new development for their parking requirements, their off-site requirements to build parking. And the second is about what we require of new development when it comes to investments in sustainable travel choices. So the first is the parking requirements, the second is the TDM or Transportation Demand Management requirements. The context for this, as I mentioned, is, you know, this uh was one of the most important pieces of our commitment under the American Cities Climate Challenge, because we know that transportation in San Jose is the most single uh impactful producer of greenhouse gas emissions, right? Depending on the year and our inventory, it's upwards of sixty or upwards of fifty percent. Uh, it just, you know, varies based on energy prices, et cetera. Uh, but we know fundamentally that when there's a lot of parking, people will drive more and that increases greenhouse gas emissions. That's from many studies. The other thing we are aware of is that too much parking actually disincentivizes you from walking or taking transit, biking, et cetera. Because as you can see in the picture in the top left, it's just way, it's too hard to walk to the front door in that building across bushes, across parking, right? Many of us have probably tried to do that. And it makes people feel like, ah, I don't feel comfortable walking there, I'm just gonna drive, right? Minimum parking requirements also artificially increase uh construction costs and then drive down the amount of of homes and other uh job uh et cetera that are produced. We also know that transportation demand management is really effective in in encouraging sustainable travel and that effectiveness is growing with uh increases in technology. So the scope of the change is under consideration. These are all within our zoning code and specifically within section twenty. Um, staff is looking at these two pieces. Um, one, which is simply to eliminate minimum parking requirements, with the exception of places where we have a contractual parking obligation, like near Deardon with the SAP Center, right? Um, there's a distinction that I wanted to point out, which is that we would eliminate the requirement, but we would not eliminate parking. We actually would expect that most people would continue to build parking, um just that they would be able to decide that rather than the city. The second component is to update the Transportation Demand Management requirements so that all large new developments citywide have some obligation for transportation demand management. Our goals are to make sure that the right amount of parking is being built, not kind of an artificial minimum that was set, um you know, in many decades ago, to enhance mobility and particularly sustainable mobility as the city grows, to make sure what we're doing is data-driven and particularly to look for um data submitted by new developments to reinforce and grow and strengthen that program. And then also to streamline the project review process across a couple different things that we already look for, especially with um our policy, which is state law at this point for SEQA, which is to look at vehicle miles traveled. Oh, sorry, getting better. All right, so the first part of this, eliminating minimum parking requirements, except in areas like Deardon, where we have a contractual parking requirement. This is a graphic that gives you a sense of the amount of parking currently required in San Jose and the space that that parking takes up as compared to the usable space that, say, a person uses at a restaurant, at a gym, at an office, or in your average apartment, right? So you can see that especially for those retail users like the restaurant or the gym, but also for the office and the home, that the amount of parking required takes up a really significant amount of usable space. So this is all required to be off-street, off-site. Often, the amount of parking required is more than the than the space of the building for the user itself. So it's not a great use of space except when it's required. We also see that in um housing in particular, a lot of that parking doesn't get used. One study uh that the city participated in with Transform found that in transit-oriented developments, twenty-five percent of the parking spaces built in these locations were actually empty during peak hours, which is the middle of the night for residential. So we're we're building more than people end up using, which is not an efficient use of of money or space. That parking is expensive to build, it can vary between upwards of thirty thousand for kind of um standard above-ground to seventy-five thousand in below-ground spaces. That cost is passed on to us, whether that is the person renting the home or the office user, the office tenant. And it also fundamentally suppresses the amount of homes that are produced. And we all know that our housing crisis is really serious, we need all those units produced. Specifically around affordable housing, one of um these recent reports by the Turner Center at Berkeley found that parking costs an additional thirty-six thousand dollars for every new unit of affordable housing. So if you have a hundred-unit project, that's three point six million, and that fundamentally comes from the public sector subsidizing that that housing, or sorry, that parking, so the housing for the car, not the people. In in kind of, in summary, we see a lot of adverse or unintended consequences of minimum parking requirements, which is that it pushes other land uses away. It also diminishes the amount that you can use for jobs in home. It also induces people to drive, right, and creates that cruising effect. Uh, parking lots haven't mentioned this before, but they're particularly bad actors when it comes to how um water pollutants accumulate and run off into our storm system and into our rivers and, you know, the oceans. We also see urban heat islands really affected by the amount of surface parking, uh sometimes pushing development out into the hills, which we all know we've been trying to stop in San Jose in the Bay Area. And then they have some real consequences as well for kind of the the quality of the urban fabric. So lots of reasons to try to let um uh make sure we're not producing more parking than is actually needed. Some other cities have already done this and made this change. Most of those changes are fairly new, so the data is not um, it's not huge data sets, but we do have this data from Seattle, which is a a case study where they eliminated parking requirements about three years ago, if I recall correctly. And, you know, we kind of looked to them to see, well, what what could happen? And I think two fundamental things have happened, one of which is that developers typically are still producing parking, right? And especially in areas outside of downtown, they are still building parking. But they are building less parking and they're building, you know, more homes and more office space instead of that additional parking. They also did, this study in particular, did show that, you know, the price premium that parking was causing was passed on in savings to the tenants and the buyers, which is pretty interesting. Uh, um, so again, our uh staff proposal from the Planning and Department of Transportation is to allow developers to assess the specific needs of their sites, of their financing, of their future tenants or anticipated future tenants, and ensure that an adequate, but not an excess amount of parking is supplied. One other important um component of this is that we have seen over time that um some small businesses have actually been um discouraged from reusing certain spaces, especially older commercial buildings that may not meet the current parking requirements. And instead of pushing them out or pushing them to other places that have more parking, uh we see this as a benefit especially to buildings within the downtown to to not have to deal with parking requirements as a small business entering a particular location. Also, those businesses would have more flexibility to turn parking that they do have or parking that's near them um into, you know, outdoor dining, et cetera, as we've seen people do uh significantly during the pandemic. The second half of this is about requiring uh transportation demand management for those new developments so that you're not only getting rid of the parking requirement you're saying, but we need you to do something to make it more feasible for people to um to not have to use their car. Uh, today, when you uh get a job at most places in downtown or you move into an apartment in downtown, you are typically handed a free parking pass. I know that's true at City Hall. And maybe if you're lucky, you're also handed a free uh transit pass, like if you're a San Jose State student or if you work at City Hall. But in general, the scales are really tipped where the parking is is pretty easy to get generally. Um, and the transportation demand management is harder to figure out, right? So what transportation demand management requirements would do would make it easier for people to get that eco pass, to use that bike path, to get a bike share pass, et cetera, make it more affordable, more convenient and more effective to do things other than drive. Oh, sorry, almost got this. All right, one of the key reasons for this is that we want our city to actually get more livable as the growth we're anticipating happens rather than less. And we know that, you know, um for many, many reasons, we're looking to add a lot of housing and a lot of new jobs to San Jose, make it a more balanced community where people can have shorter commutes. But we also know that those new residents and those new workers, when they make that change into their their new place of employment, their new home, that's the right time. That's the right time to offer them a more sustainable choice when they haven't made their habits and they haven't picked all of of the. The ways in which they will typically get around, right? So in doing so, we minimize the need for parking, we minimize congestion, right? Especially at a regional level and on our our streets. And we minimize those negative impacts like to safety on the transportation network. So we want these new units, which this would apply to substantially, to really be those ones where people find it easy. To get out of their cars. We do have transportation demand management required today for some users, so we wanted to point out. You know, the current transportation demand management ordinance and then how this proposal would shift that. So today, if you are requesting a parking reduction. Greater than twenty percent, then you have to do TDM to prove that people have a different way to get around. We really want to flip that to say you should provide the parking you believe you need. And we always want it to be easy and simple for people to not choose to use that parking. There are more than forty TDM strategies that we're considering as part of this. Because the field has grown significantly about what is effective. And we will be or we're proposing. To significantly increase the amount of monitoring and compliance, especially for larger developments. So that we know whether it's working or not and can adjust accordingly. Here are some of the strategies, just to give you a sense, what on earth is she talking about? What is transportation man management? Right? But some of them, the the more programmatic ones are kind of the classic ideas, car sharing. Transit passes, education, marketing and outreach to inform people how to. How to get around telecommuting certainly qualifies and we all see the growth in that. Parking cash out, getting paid for that parking you're not using. And unbundling the parking so that you can choose whether to pay for the parking. At your home or at your office instead of having it come, but then paying the price automatically. Physical strategies, we're also considering here because we know that the system that we have is not built out as much as it needs to be. So in summary, this is a two part change to our ordinance that we are considering at the staff level. First is to let private developments decide how much parking is required. Based on their context and their needs. And secondly, to require transportation demand management strategies in that. So we'll be continuing to seek input like today. Through the fall as we draft up the ordinance and respond to council questions from August. And then anticipate bringing this to the city council after the planning commission and others. Toward the end of or early next year, end of this year or early next year. So that is it.
Yeah, this is Wolf from, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So going back to this case study from CL. I get the point about reducing or eliminating minimum parking requirements. But if you have a residential area, you still have people who have cars. So when when you eliminate the minimum parking requirements for, you know, residential complexes, where do they park? Because they still have their cars.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's a great question. So as the case study in Seattle found. Most of the new development still still builds parking. That the, even though they're not required to, to your point, well from if they're looking at. You know, marketing these units, either selling them or leasing them. They're going to do their homework on how how many of their potential buyers or renters. Are expecting to have one car or two cars. And then they will build that parking accordingly, right? That they might see that, you know, twenty five percent of their potential base. Doesn't have a car and wouldn't want to pay for that parking, but the other seventy five percent they might find do. And so I think, you know, exactly to your point, this is eliminating a requirement that the city dictate. How much parking you build and instead saying, based on your financing, based on your anticipated buyer or renter. Build as much parking as you need, not as much as we, you know, think you need.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks Wolf from, yeah, I I thought this particular presentation would be a good setup for our discussion here with Bill. As we take that next step, Bill, just another minute or two minutes, I guess, of patience here. So anything else, guys, before we open public comment, Henry?
Henry, I think you are still muted if you're trying to speak. Yes.
Does this PDM change eliminate the maximum percentage of reduction?
Yes, well, technically, if if the planning commission and the city council. Agree with the staff recommendation that we should lift the parking requirements generally. Then there would be no parking requirement two tier off of. And so that the TDM would be required, the parking would be up to the developer in consultation with their their context. Right? And their their financing, their potential tenants, et cetera.
Got it, thanks.
Absolutely.
David? Two things. The first one, I guess, is a simple one. Having been in development for many years, developers always complain the city wanted them to build parking. They didn't want to. And cities where they've eliminated it, now that I always joke with my developer friends, they said, gosh darn it, now I have to figure out how much parking I need.
Right?
I support this in that context. And more importantly, it's not the developer, it's the financer. The bank's going to tell them how much parking they need in order to finance the project, in order to allow. For them to get a tenant into the space, whether it's residential or office. So I think you're on the right track here. And even more importantly, for those of you who are familiar with a project called Second Street Studios. Which I believe has seventy five underground parking spaces at a cost of almost three million dollars for a. For a affordable, no, I forgot the nature of the project.
Supportive housing, I believe.
Supportive housing, I've toured that, those spaces are empty all the time. Because those are for folks that don't have cars. And I know that is explained to me, the the neighborhood, the community. Said, we must have these spaces or we won't let you build your project, if I can put it so bluntly. So if this eliminates the need for supportive housing projects to build seventy five spaces and waste over three million dollars. I'm a hundred percent in favor of it. Miko?
Have you thought about separating the business from the residential component? And trying to remove the parking minimums from businesses first to see how that works as a model. And I say that, you know, because we had the same issue before opening our coffee shop. We were required to have a couple of spots that are not used. They're like kind of sectioned off on the property. And if you want businesses to open in, you know, spaces that are not normally used for retail. And therefore, maybe it's a test pilot for this type of effort. Before shaking things up a little bit too much, you know, because I'm, I understand the whole residential argument as well. Like just getting people used to the idea of of having more places to open their business. And then if it doesn't work out, they can change their business location. You know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah. Just to answer your question directly. We haven't talked about that strategy among the project team yet. But I think it's a, it's a good idea to talk about if, you know, if there's not support for the rest of the proposal at this time. Because I think we agree with you that that's an unnecessary burden on a lot of small businesses.
Okay, I don't see any other hands up. You know, on this particular topic, Tessa, would you like your two minutes for public comment?
Sure, yeah. I can do that. Do I get like a little clock or something?
Alright, we're all set, go ahead.
Good, thank you. Well, you know, just really, like I said in my chat, which I appreciate you had a chat. And that, you know, in terms of our climate crisis, we need to change. And this is what is the science says, we need to listen to the science as we've learned from COVID. And, you know, basically, we need to stop driving, stop flying. And so this is, this is our future, if we're going to have a future. And, you know, we need to do, you know, we stop the driving on Santa Clara Street, stop the driving on San Fernando. I think San Fernando would be a great street to cut the whole, all the driving down, all, no driving on on San Fernando. And, you know, like I was saying before, is that you have made it more difficult for us to ride our bicycles. That that is the most terrible thing. And this is where our business friendly and our economic growth. Has had detrimental effects. And when we look at our, you know, even what we've done. In terms of our, you know, how much money has gone into the green economy. It's been two percent of the trillions that we've spent on from the federal government. And this is where all the money has gone to businesses and all the resources have gone. And, you know, you've made it more difficult for us to ride our bicycles. And this is where, you know, why Santa Clara looks as awful as it does. And it could be so much better, like Santa Barbara, you know, where the state street was, you know, closed off. And that's what we need to do. We need to close these streets off. And, you know, stop driving, you know, and all the money that we do for Viva Caya and, you know, setting up these systems of of. Of bicycle and pedestrian friendly infrastructure needs to stay forever. And why, you know, to to spend all this money and to send it up for one day, we need to do it forever. And, you know, that that's our future if we're going to have a future. And so we need to make these changes now and appreciate that the city is, you know, looking at that under Jessica Zank's leadership, you know. Of the DOT saying that we need to do these things. And, you know, we need to, you know, definitely have a reduction, our our demand for parking. And we need to build housing without car infrastructure. And, you know, you know, things are changing, we need to change. And this is what we need to be doing going forward. And we need the leadership. That's why it's so important who we have for mayor. We really need a very green mayor next time because they're the ones that are choosing our parking boards. And so. Alright, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Alright, Bill, what, can you give us a summary of your your memo? We all have the memo, we've all read the memo hopefully, and if you can give us a summation of that and then we can discuss.
Great, thank you very much.
Charlie, can I, sorry, can I interrupt here real quick? Just to be really clear, we cannot have a full blown discussion on the item. That Bill is introducing in his public comment in his letter because it's not been agendized. And so that would be a Brown Act violation. So happy to allow Bill to comment and give his opinions. And kind of run us through his letter for the, through public comments, but we really need to stay tight on not having a full blown discussion. On those, on on the topics.
Alright, thank you.
As the rules, I thought it was on the agenda, but I will defer to you. Okay.
Alright, so I guess I will ask how much time I have. That's not, Brown Act doesn't control two minutes, right?
So Bill, as chair, I'll give you the time reasonably amount that you need here to.
I'll, I'll, I'll keep it short. My original email was a request to agendize it. It did not happen, apparently. That's okay. I appreciate the time Charlie and the board. Those of you that don't know me, my name is Bill Sowers. I'm a forty year San Jose resident. Twenty five year commercial property owner, so I certainly. Understand David's concerns raised about access to parking. Our commercial property is right next door to San Jose State, Charlie. And we are trying to walk that fine line of creating a neighborhood gathering place, which actually generates. Revenue for our property, business owners while limiting the amount of automobile traffic. So I get it. I'm an eight year downtown core resident. My wife and I decided to move into the Axis. Those of you who know where that is, it's right next to the Hotel De Anza. Which by the way is usually pictured as the gateway to San Jose, if you look up it on, look it up on Wikipedia. We moved in here understanding that the zoning for this area co-mingles. Residential, commercial and entertainment, or however you want to consider it. We moved here with one car at the time to take advantage of the walkability to offices, to transit and so forth. I have also been pretty actively involved with almost everybody here representing the DOT. For many, many years as part of SAG, Charlie and other things. So I get it. I understand the complexity and I also am completely bought into the long term vision. I'll just make a comment here, twenty forty is outside of my timeframe of interest, if you look at my wager with my life insurance company. So I have been trying to raise the voice for existing. Or near term future residents that are going to live in the downtown core. I can share my screen if if the thing is useful, but Heather, maybe it's not a thing to do. The downtown core, as it's defined, is completely surrounded by neighborhoods. Single family home neighborhoods that have parking permits. The downtown core not only does not have parking permits, we also have meters in front of. All of the residential units for the most part, certainly in front of mine. So what I'm asking is that. You know, given the fact, as you've all described, that we are at the epicenter of massive redevelopment. Which is wonderful. But that redevelopment is going to be decades in the making. Again, I'll keep referring to twenty forty. All I'm asking for from the parking board is some consideration for those residences. In the high density areas, I'd like to call them our density pioneers in our vertical neighborhoods. That, given the fact that we are looking at re, or maybe you already have completely re enhanced. The the residential parking permit process. Is there any way for those of us that live in the core, and it would be a small number because there, we do have. Assigned parking spaces, but it's much less than one per resident. We're mostly adults in these areas. And by the way, if the, if part of Jessica's strategy is to reduce available parking. By providing these permits to residents of these vertical neighborhoods. So that we can park in front of our houses. That that's really kind of all I'm looking at. I can go through the, what I was proposing in terms of how these residential permits might work if if there's time for it, if there's a need. Other than that, I would just like to say that I'm all for all of the things that we're trying to do to. You know, embark on this journey to a world class downtown. Given climate change and all of the things, you know, affordable housing and all of that. Please don't treat the residents inequitably. Who have already embraced this vision by moving to the downtown core. That's all I'm asking. I now have a second car since I've retired. We use it for travel. The most miles, miles I put on in San Jose are moving it every single day back and forth. Because I can't park in front of where I live. So. Just for your consideration, thank you very much.
Bill, thank you very much. I appreciate your comments and your willingness to come to the board and to clarify. You know, in your memo and any words here, what's going on and what your needs are. And so I will hand that back to Arian and Heather and company here about. You know, what's our next step as far as putting that on an agenda or discussing or how frankly have staff come up with some policy measures. That that we can discuss here at this committee.
Thank you.
So before I throw it back to Arian to kind of talk about agenda, I just want to give a little kind of. Background information kind of on the residential permit parking program that the city has, just kind of give you some context. So then you can then kind of decide what your next steps might be for the board members to consider. So our current residential permit parking program is a special service. It's intended to address parking impacts in neighborhoods that are experiencing excessive parking demand. So where there's either significant intrusion or the. So where there's either significant intrusion or there's excessive internal demand. There's not any parking available or it's very, very difficult for residents to find parking. That's what the the program is currently set up to address. We implemented in kind of large zones because what ends up happening is if you enter, excuse me, if you only use um enter into a zone with a couple of streets, it just ends up pushing um parking to uh the next street over. So they need to, we need to be very mindful when we're establishing those zones that we're not just pushing the occupancy issue to another street over. The program was uh the resources allocated towards the residential permit parking program were eliminated due to budget reductions quite some time ago, 10-plus years ago. So the program is not something that's currently funded. And there isn't the opportunity for the city to study new zones. The option that is available is if neighborhoods are interested in requesting a potential R P P in their zone. Um, there are steps that they need to take um on their own, usually a kind of homeowners association or something takes on the lead. And they then have to um pay for and secure usually a consultant to study the issue and the impact. Um, and then there's lots of other kind of layers that are that of costs that come along with that. So right now, again, it's not something the city is funded to study and take on, but there is an opportunity for residents to do that um lift and then bring that proposal to the city for consideration.
Charlie, if I may, if this downtown core is not, does not fit the description of severely impacted by traffic, I don't know what does.
It's not a traffic impact, it's a parking impact. That's what that I'm just just solely just looking at the residential permit parking program.
Come spend a couple of hours sitting on my front porch and talk to me about parking impact. There has got to be a common sense solution. I know the city is understaffed. I can't organize 5,000 residents, which by the way are way more than the Delmas neighborhood or um, you know, the Autumn neighborhood. It's more than Nagley Park, I bet. Please, somebody in D O T, figure out how we can have a rational, simple, practical and cost-effective way to support the thousands of people that followed the city's lead and moved to the largest urban village in the city. I'm I'm I'm, I will just say it, Heather, I'm offended by being shot down once again because of lack of city resources. Jessica, come on, we need to be able to do something.
Yeah, so so Bill, I'll I'll put my two cents out here, Heather, as well, you know. You you go to any parking app that you want to go to, Bill, okay? You go to any uh any way of looking at what it costs to park your car in downtown San Jose. And it's absurdly ridiculously cheap. You go to any other major or minor city in the country and you will see that people pay more than a dollar or $2 an hour to park their car. You go to our sister city up in the north, San Francisco, and, you know, it's going to be 10 or 15x. I don't think we want to go there, but we need to take steps to go closer to that and recognize that if people have cars and and most of us do, there's a cost of ownership that goes with that. And whether that's in your driveway, in on the street in front of your house or in the parking uh structure or the parking lot that's down the street, those are the costs of ownerships that we personally bear on those vehicles. And sometimes it's the city's job, this is all my opinion, by the way. Uh, it's the city's job to provide for parking or provide for that structure. Other times, it's our responsibility to find those locations that we put our cars, we put our vehicles, we put our boats. Uh, you know, we put our recreation vehicles uh that we have. And so, you know, I I I think this personal ownership here that needs to happen. Uh, city needs to guide, but we we all need to own our own pieces of it.
Can I can I tag on just uh just one more item onto Charlie's comments? That um the city does have a residential um parking permit that is available for purchase in our city parking garages. Um, off the top of my head, I'm not sure what that costs, but we do have a option for residents to park in our parking facilities at a discounted rate during um non-peak hours. So um overnight parking. Um, and in the downtown, the meters are free after 6:00 P M, between 6:00 P M and 9:00 A M. So there is overnight parking available on the street that's um to Charlie's point, free.
Don't school me on the parking. It's I'd three-hour parking in front of my door. It's uh it's 6:00 P M now, a plan to move it to 8. Uh, it's going to go to variable parking. And Charlie, I understand what you're saying, personal responsibility. What I'm asking for is those of us that are living through this transition. My street was closed for the whole weekend last week. You're welcome. Why is it not feasible to have a small number of us be able to have a parking permit to park downtown when 22 other neighborhoods have that ability? And you're trying to reduce the the accessibility of parking spaces? You said that in your presentation. It was your last slide, Jessa, Jessica.
Okay, uh, thank you, Bill. Anything else? Agenda-wise, I think we're at the end of the agenda. Anything else that needs to be brought before the board today?
Yeah, I say this is Wolf from I think you know what Bill is saying. I think, you know, that requires a little bit further discussion. And, you know, I'm also a downtown resident and, you know, it's really hard to invite, for example, friends over. It's hard to get contractors. We wanted to do some remodel of our bathrooms and their contractor telling me I'm not coming to downtown because there's no parking. You know, we all suffer as residents a little bit from that. I understand, you know, there are the business owners who suffer, but there are also the residents who suffer. And I think, you know, there need to be a little bit more discussion about what can we do for existing residents and also for existing businesses to kind of, you know, make it a little bit more palatable. And like Bill said, you know, in downtown, we have street closures almost every weekend. So that again, you know, it takes away parking, but at the same time, some residents have even a hard time to get into their own places.
Thank you, Wolf. Appreciate that. So back to staff, um, you know, to me, the the work item here uh is, you know, to come back to this committee. You know, whether that's at our November meeting or whether it's our next meeting after that. With the idea of what are what are residence options? What are the what are the things that residents can do? Uh, what are the city's obligations? Were not the city's obligations? Um, you know, when it comes to this, uh, what is the buyer beware? You know, as far as when you're going into high-density housing, uh, what are you signing up for? Uh, and versus what you're not signing up for? And, you know, what can we, you know, do, you know, along Tessa's line? We're we're, this is about sustainability and we're trying to, you know, find better ways of having bike lanes and walk lanes and scooter lanes and get people out of their cars and out of their transportation modes. And that's where the first presentation today was so good, you know, talking about how do we, you know, improve the various ways that people can get around. Um, and and so what's the intersection of that? Because, you know, Bill's right, we can't wait 20 or 30 years for these answers. You know, we we have to have these answers much sooner because, you know, we're trying to create a downtown that is going to be vibrant, hence you have to close the streets occasionally to have festivals and have parties and have uh runs or what have you. That's all part of the, you know, what happens in any major city. Uh, and frankly, if we didn't do that, I would expect Bill and many others to be coming in banging on the doors saying, where's where's the vibrancy of the downtown? Um, and so, you know, we're we're on both sides of this thing. So, you know, whatever staff can do to come back to this committee to, uh, you know, give give us some options and then we as a committee can decide what it is, if anything, that we want to recommend over to the council.
Let's say we, the November meeting is fairly full. I don't know that we should try and cram something into that, especially given the amount of time. We're already only two weeks away. So uh I'd say the March 2nd meeting would be the the first opportunity to put something that we can agendize. Downtown resident parking as a generic placeholder and uh I think we can come up with some talking points and some information to present to the board.
I think that's wonderful. Thank you. Last comment, Bill?
Yes, I would just like to plant a seed. I understand personal responsibility. I'm willing to pay for the ability to park on the street if that's something that's feasible. We've got a whole infrastructure around a permitting process. That's all I would say, and I'm happy to do that. That $1, $2 is $2 an hour in general around here. If I'm parking for long periods of time, number one, it doesn't last. I can't do that in one spot. And number two, that gets spent really expensive really quickly. That's all. So I appreciate your comments, Charlie. I'm not arguing with any of the future vision. All I'm looking for is a solution to what I think is just a reasonable request for equitability for somebody that's already embraced downtown. And by the way, I walk and I cycle almost everywhere I go. Thank you, but I happen to own a second vehicle.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, any other further business? All right, I believe. Thank you, team. Uh, we will see you in a couple, two, three weeks.
Yep.